Good evening, we will call the school board meeting at eleven fourteen, or Sarah please call the roll.
Allen.
Here.
McKean.
Here.
Hobbs.
Yep.
Romanski. Swanson.
Good evening.
Tucker.
Here.
And Bowerman.
Yes ma'am. So we're gonna start tonight with items we like to do, we call it the good news, and we've got two different cases of good news, actually three, to talk about tonight. I'm gonna do the one where we don't have the folks here, there's actually the banquet for the track team tonight, so as a result they're unable to be with us. But we want to offer congratulations to our cross-country teams who participated in the state. This was down at St. Olaf, our girls team, you guys probably all know this, but our girls team, exactly, can, finished fifth overall, so let me just run quickly through the names of the girls who participated in that for the benefit of the people who are watching at home. Tess Miston. Jada Becker. Isabel Mager, hopefully I'm pronouncing these names right. Kinsey Mizgen. Abigail Mager. Myra Rachel. Ally Steba. So all those girls participated in state, the team finished fifth, outstanding, so let's do what you did. We also had Nick Olford, who participated for the boys, at state as well, so outstanding contribution by these kids at cross-country. The other thing we're gonna do, and we've got some with us here tonight, is that, you know, it's a big deal for you guys, but it's even a big deal for our district, to recognize outstanding achievement in actuals and some of our athletes. Mr. Jenke's gonna come forward and kinda talk to us a little bit about some of our students, but these are students who have been recruited and have signed letters of intent with NCAA schools. I'm gonna let John introduce, I think we're missing a couple tonight.
We actually, yeah.
Okay, missing three tonight, we're gonna recognize them, and we have some certificates for them, we'll take their pictures and agree afterwards, so John? Yeah, have them all come on up here.
Alright, why don't you guys all come on up here?
Alright, very good, yeah.
So, first of all, I'm gonna quickly cheer Bowerman, recognize the three young folks that are not here. As you just did, Sidney Zard, is a girls basketball player, will be attending the Vemigee State. Little unique story with her, following in the footsteps of her, of her mother and two older sisters, who all were athletes at Vemigee State, and she'll be the fourth one in the family, so she gets to, will join her older two sisters at Vemigee State next year, so, great honor for her. We also, Anna Blashko, who is on our volleyball team, rewrote the record book for Shakopee volleyball as it comes to blocks. Had a phenomenal year, led us to back-to-back section championship, section championship matches, last year kind of out of nowhere, this year kind of expected, got there, came up a little short again, but had a great, great career. And then, she's going to the University of Nebraska Omaha for volleyball. And then Tristan Truax, who'd be a five-year varsity girls hockey player for us, got the season rolling with a tie on Saturday, but has had a great career, has led us in scoring for the last number of years. And she will be going to, I call it Mankato State, I think it's, is it the University of Minnesota Mankato now? I forget how they do it. She will be just down one sixty-nine. So with us here tonight, we have Jackson Allen, first, Jackson is a five-year varsity tennis player for us, was a part of four conference championships, also a part of the team, we've been in the South Suburban Conference now. We've not yet lost conference match in the South Suburban Conference, Jackson's certainly a big part of that, he's played number one singles for us, I believe, since he began playing. And then the highlight, certainly this last year as a junior, finished a perfect season, not only did he not lose a match, he didn't lose a set, all year, and finished undefeated and individual state champ. So Jackson Allen will be attending the University of Minnesota already in January. Next we have Alex Crowe, Alex is a wrestler, he will also be joining Jackson at the University of Minnesota. Jack, or excuse me, Alex is a three-time state participant, has been a part of five section finals. Fortunately, we've come up a little short in those section finals, but certainly a great opportunity to get there, to help us get there. But has just done a fantastic job, has led us, you know, as we finished the Minnesota Conference, led us to be competitive and competing for conference championships in the South Suburban Conference as well. And Alex had a very difficult road in the recruiting process, and very late in the game, decided to be, to stay home and be a gopher, so Alex Crowe. Then Brent Jones, teammate, also been a part of a number of section championship matches, individually has won section championships. And Brent has been in multiple weight classes since he began as a freshman, this is through three weight classes. Brent is a three-time defending state champ, will be going after a fourth straight here this winter, in a fourth different weight class, right? In a fourth different weight class. He's starting to, start to ball. So, but has really, you know, as I shared last week at our ceremony, just the epitome of just a tremendous student athlete, just calm, cool, collective, doesn't get rattled by much. I asked him last week if he gets excited about much, and he just said, no. And so, but that's who he is on the mat, you know, he doesn't get rattled, he doesn't get upset about things, but he's done a fantastic job, and certainly wish all of them, but also Brent in particular, a hearty good luck, as the season starts next week, and will go after championship number four. So congratulations to Brent, and also the University of Minnesota. And then Matea Hutton, girls basketball, should be attending Southwest State University in Marshall, the Mustangs, right? Following after her head coach, Coach Mitchell. Also will be reunited with a former teammate, Kelly Rodney, who's a freshman there right now. But Matea's been a part of South Suburban Conference Championship, last season, ran the table in the toughest conference in the state, went eighteen and all, finished undefeated in the conference. Was a part of the state tournament team as a sophomore with the team and finished fourth, and I have to tell the story, my favorite memory of Matea's going to be after the quarterfinal game as a sophomore, the next morning in the Star Tribune, and there was a color picture taken up about half of one page, of her swatting one into the, into the fifth row. Just, it's a vivid memory of mine, and something I'll never forget, and something that I'll carry with me of Matea forever, so Matea Hutton heading to Southwest State University.
So one big hand for those who are not here, these four are here representing Shakopee in such a phenomenal fashion, we wish you could stay, do well this year, but then when you leave, best of luck where you're going, congratulations. Down the camera. Thanks guys. And since I don't think school board is the most exciting, you're welcome to stay, but you're also welcome to head on out, as we're gonna take your business at this point.
You're welcome.
Actually, like, we're gonna leave another tip on. Okay, we're gonna do one other great, this is the third item of good news tonight, we're gonna kinda jump the order just real quickly in the honor of our guest, Charlie, you wanna come up to the table? So it's item fifteen point one, if you're following on the agenda, but we have just an incredible, incredibly generous grant, that has been made to the district, I'm gonna let Rod kinda introduce this, and then we'll proceed with the award itself.
Sure, well thank you Charlie for being here, I wanted to point out that Charlie's one of our alum here from Shakopee School, so we welcome you back.
Did you ask me at the last one, I didn't make it?
But rather than me talking a whole lot, I did wanna tee it up by saying, the donation that we are getting tonight is a hundred thousand dollars that can be put toward the goals that meet strategically for the district, and twenty-five thousand toward our Indian Ed program. And so we have, we have a lot of needs, and a lot of the things that we've talked about as a board, we're making tremendously difficult choices, and so this couldn't have come at a better time for us, it's certainly most appreciated, and I thought I would maybe ask you to say a few words, Charlie. You, you and the community have always been so kind and generous to us, and give you a chance to maybe share your thoughts behind the donation.
Yeah, you got me there. I'm just glad to find the place. I said, that's the old Kmart, by the old Kmart.
There you go.
I said, alright, I know where that is, I'm sitting over by, I think he's over there, and thinking, oh, it's not here. But a few phone calls, my staff coming over here. You know what, I think, I didn't know what I, what I was gonna talk about, but the, I was told the other day, we have probably sixty million dollars in requests a year. Let's try it. And it's, it's kinda neat, it's sad because there's, there's so much need out there, but, but throughout the, throughout what we've done in the last fifteen or twenty years, we've created this, this giving program that, that really spreads across the country, mostly for Native American tribes, but, but we do have a large program that we do for donations for local events, and local things like the schools and stuff. But this year, we just wanted, we wanted to do something, we didn't know what, it started probably a few months back, well probably a year ago, you know, somebody plans to see if you guys are expanding, or you need a soccer field, or lacrosse field, or, there's a lot of needs, and that's my point, is we, we had given Shakopee some, we got to name one of the rooms in the, in the new facility, just opened up, I forget the name of it now, but, but we give them some money for different things, and we wanted to do something for the school, and so, but the good news is, it wasn't just you, it was, it was Parlay also that got the hundred and twenty-five, and so, so we don't know how you're gonna use it, we, you know, we figured you'd be best to figure out that, and, but we did wanna carve out a piece for Native Americans, so. We don't have a lot of kids that go, I don't have all the stats on what our kids, but we, we're splitting between Shakopee and Parlay, and so, but I think a large number of our students go to the international school that we, we pay for. And so, but I think, you know, I do know there's, there's kids that go to Shakopee and Parlay, so, and then we have our own school programs too, but, but, yeah, we just, we just wanted to do something, and that was, that was what we did, so, use it any way you want, you know? We did this, I don't know if you guys remember this, but I think in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, we did it countywide, we did it with the cities, we gave, I think it was a hundred and fifty thousand to each city. It was kinda fun actually to watch and see how they used it, because they kinda didn't know how they used it, you know, you don't have a lot of extra money to do some of these, some of the projects, like, that really the people need, you know, and we've been helping with trails connecting the communities, and we're gonna be opening up one in Parlay that's connected to the, to the state park there, that's really gonna be beneficial to the, to the lake, the local people, so. Yeah, I don't, I don't know what else to do, I've got some questions, or some things I wanted me to cover, but I just, thanks for inviting us, and thanks for doing what you guys do for our kids, you know, that's important to us, so.
Well, on behalf of the board, Charlie, we want to thank you and the council and the entire tribe for this very generous gift, I don't think we can begin to tell you today what exactly we're gonna spend that on, but I can guarantee you we'll spend it wisely, and we'll put it to good use, and perhaps we can follow up and say, hey, here's, kinda like the cities maybe did, but we can follow up and say, this is how your, your generous donation was put to use, but we sincerely thank you on behalf of the board, administration, the entire district, thank you very, very much. Please pass it along to your whole council and to the tribe. Thank you very much, thank you for being with us. Ash, wanna get a picture again?
One, two, three, one more for safety, one, two, three.
Thank you, really appreciate it.
You're also excused, by the way, you can leave.
You're welcome to stay. Pretty salivating stuff.
You know, I should've told you the story of Rod, was it you that called me, on the alumni thing? So I was with one of, you got, can I do this? It's a good story. With one of my, I have five children, and, and I was striving to do a job with my youngest son, who was, he was nineteen or so. Anyway, we're driving along, and I get a call from my, my assistant saying, you gotta call Rod, the superintendent from the schools, and I said, why? We can't tell you, you gotta call him, and I'm kinda teasing with my son, I said, you know, I did a lot of bad things in school. But anyway, we were joking the whole time, I was on the phone with Rod about getting elected to the alumni thing, so, in the Hall of Fame, so, that was fun, but.
Sorry, because statute of limitations expired. Thanks again, Charles. Okay, let's resume, and I think that we'll take this moment to recognize visitor, I think we have somebody who wants to speak to the board tonight? Yeah, so come on up, tell us your name, what you'd like to speak about, and for context, we don't have this happen very often, but we keep it, no, yeah, the sheets probably around for a while. Give you a few minutes to speak, we generally don't respond to it, I don't know what the topic is, but we'll certainly take whatever it is you are concerned about, or wanna share, or under advisement.
Oh sure, I appreciate that, I appreciate the time.
Yeah.
Board members, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Corey Bullard, and I've been a resident here of Shakopee for the last nineteen years. I currently have a son in high school and a daughter in Juneau, also have two nephews and a niece in the school system, I've been a very big supporter of Shakopee schools and athletics and academics for a very long time. But I have to tell you, our prayers, my family's prayers, church's prayers are with you from the trauma that has happened in the, in the high school the last two weeks, and unfortunately, the incident did happen, and our, our prayers, and we're hoping that all the students and everybody can work through this, and, and come to a, a brighter spot in the future. My, my thoughts are, is how did we get to this point to where a, a girl was raped in a locker room two weeks ago? How did we get to the point of kids being gone from class for fifteen, twenty, thirty minutes, and, and not knowing that the teachers or whoever is responsible, not knowing where these kids are for this, for this terrible, terrible act? I can't imagine what you all are going through, but I can imagine all a lot of the parents are going through, because I have kids, and I have a daughter going to high school next year. How did, for, how during that time, did no one in the school hear, hear these cries for help? It's inconceivable to me, based on the budget of the school and the security of the school, that this genius of a predator made it through the, the security protocols of the school and had this happen, I, it's unconceivable as a parent that this could happen. On top of that, it hasn't only been two weeks, and I, and I give the school's system some time on this, but there hasn't been no communication to address this with parents, or the community. And I know that there's probably something that we don't want to have this debilitating image of the school system of Shakopee, because of this one incident, incident that's happened, that hasn't happened maybe forever in the public school system, it hasn't happened since I've been here, but it did happen, and this is where we are. And I think the schools, the school board, administration needs to come out and, and communicate with the community, and let us know what's gonna, what's gonna happen, and what's going to take place in the future, to put some protocols in place, to make sure that we know where every student is, and what the safety of that, of every student is in their schools. I know that if this was a large organization, a public organization, as such as what I work in, or any other place, this would be a huge scandal within that, within the four walls of that, of that, of that company, and it would be all over the news. And I think so far, happily, that we have been somewhat sheltered from that, from, from the media, but I think that someone has to be held accountable. It would, it would happen in the public se, public sector, or in the private sector, it should happen in the public sector too. And I don't usually go around doing this, because this is really the first time I've spoken in front of a, a large group of people in a very long time, that, that's not a part of my business that I work with, but somebody has to be held accountable. And it starts with the administration of the Shakopee school district, and I don't know if that is, is censure, I don't know if that's resignation, I don't know if that is, is absence, paid without leave absence, but the school board and the Shakopee school administration needs to get to the bottom, and the Shakopee parents need some answers, and some action steps moving forward. And I say that, and I've got, I don't know anybody else here that wants to talk about that, so I'm an army of one, representing some of the parents of Shakopee. But, as my daughter is coming to school next year, I don't really worry about my son as much, but as my daughter is coming to Shakopee High School next year, I really have some reservations about bringing her into the school system, even though I know our, everyone's distance and tips are, are clear, of having everyone safe, and keeping everyone safe. Part two of this, and I'll try to keep this brief, brief, there was a communication that came out on Thursday, that I found very tone deaf to the subject of the last two weeks. It came from the counseling department, and let me read this, read this letter to you. Dear students and families, we have met with the individual students to process the recent events in the high school and the developments of the political climate, the political climate. We would like to extend our support to you during the difficult time at Shakopee High School and our community. I'm not sure what the political climate was, that you, that the counseling department's referring to, I'm not sure if somebody else wrote that for them, but having the political climate and the rape, and the same message, I found extremely difficult to understand. I do not understand that how a presidential election, where every four years, one party wins, one party loses, is lumped into the same thing as a student rape at the, at the high school, and the counseling that's needed for the students there, don't understand at all. Extremely tone deaf message to the parents. To go on, we continue to foster kindness, inclusiveness, fairness, unity, and safety at Shakopee High School. Please contact your appropriate student counselor if you feel you need support today. I'd like to say that I know that the school system can be a little bit leftist, but the first word to come in that sentence was inclusiveness and fairness, all of those are, are very much loaded political words, and used by one side of the political reality. And knowing that a rape happened in our school two year, two weeks ago, that, in that sentence, kindness, inclusion, and fairness, unity, and safety, and safety comes last in that sentence, is, is uncomprehensible. And kinda tells me maybe, just maybe, where safety lies in our high school, or in our school system, based on some other ideology. I know that, in that political environment, that the majority of Shakopee residents voted for that political climate. Though that majority also voted in a hundred million dollars for the school system, and I think a little more sensitivity on emails like this from groups within the school system should be noted, and should be understood. So with that, I would just like to say, I appreciate everything you do to educate my kids, they enjoy going to Shakopee public schools. I'm happy, and I feel comfortable that you will prepare them as much as possible to get them to, to get them to be ready after graduation to, to pursue, pursue their interests, but for God's sakes, let's keep them safe in our schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Corey.
Good evening.
Alright, we will move on to consideration of the agenda as presented, I've been looking for a motion. They would've signed in, so we don't have any other individuals on this here. We'll move on to consideration of the agenda, do I have a motion to accept, well, do we have any changes to the agenda that I might, I know that I'm aware of. Okay, so I'm looking for a motion for acceptance of the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, thank you. Any comments on the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor, sign by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion passes, we'll move on to consent, is there any notice or changes to consent? Okay? Unless there's any questions or comments or removals, I'll look for an, a motion to accept consent as printed. Ooh, thank you, second, thank you Tony. Any additional discussion on consent? Hearing none, all those in favor, sign by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion passes, we have consent, and at this point, Rod, I would suggest we just go in order, okay? So we are on item twelve point one, right? Yeah, twelve point one, so this is the enrollment, this is our October annual enrollment update, and then Rod, you're gonna actually talk to us about this.
Yeah, Sarah, do you have it available to pull up for those at home?
I do.
Couple of, I think, key learnings on the enrollment, is, as you guys know, we do these on the October one dates, and I'll wait just a moment till Sarah gets that pulled up. You wanna go to the first one, Sarah?
Sure, yeah, sure.
So maybe a couple of items, just to point out, when we look at our, these are the, we'll go back to the two thousand fifteen actuals, and if you read up, we've got Eagle Creek, eight through five, Jackson Red Oaks, Sun Path, Sweden, then we get our secondary level, and so on here. Basically, what we do each year, we track the number of students on actual of October one, so this is October one fifteen, and we just finished up with our October one of sixteen. You can look at the comparisons, and you'll notice some differences in building sizes and so forth on the left-hand column, then if you shift over to the right-hand column, that's the cumulative effect, so the ten-one in gold again, of fifteen, sixteen, seventeen projected, so we're, we're letting folks know where we thought we'd be, and then the, I think that's purple, isn't it?
It's green.
Gray, okay, the gray there lists where the actual is, and so, we're not, we're not, definitely not always that close in our projections, but the K-12 overall number, we projected eighty-one fifty-two, and actual on October one was the eighty-one fifty, off by two students on that date. Then if you roll. That gives you that sense then of the, of the projections, using the ten-one fifteen actual, sixteen seventeen projected, again the actual, and then the plus minus projected, and it gives you by, breakout by, we've broken it out by building, by grade level, secondary, elementary, and so I know you've had a chance to look at this, but besides the obvious, that we tracked where we thought we'd be, are there any questions or comments that you might have?
One, one other comment that I might have, Rod, on, on your graph, is that it is up, up about a hundred and fifty kids, or last year's at the same time, so, and we're, we're still seeing small growth, but we are seeing some growth in the route of the district.
And I think what Mike's referring to is oftentimes at a large school like ours, you tend to see at the secondary level, some of the unfortunate. you tend to see at the secondary level, some of the unfortunate, sometimes they're dropouts, and then we lose them and we don't get them at Takata either, so we're doing a, I think, a concentrated effort to make sure that if students are going somewhere, that we follow the tracking, because that obviously affects our formula funding and everything else, so...
Can I also mention this graph? This graph shows a K-five, number is six-eight, is the second set of bar graphs, and the third set is nine-twelve, so...
That's an important distinction, because that's what we'll be looking at in the future with the new way the district is set up. Thank you for pointing that out.
Actually, that's an excellent point, Sarah.
Right.
Just for context, it's twenty-five, twenty-one in the high school, so obviously we're two years away from opening the high school, but we're already, you know, pushing probably at that point twenty-six, twenty-seven hundred students or more in the hallmark when we open.
The other thing I would maybe point out, I forgot to point out, is we've, you know, we study these numbers quite often, and we knew that we would have that bubble go through or that blip go through. But I think on the top, what it may, well, it shows you here too, where our numbers have, are less than we would hope for, and then on the other breakdown, the individualized breakdown, you can noticeably see that we've got, you know, you're tracking with those high sixes and almost hit that seven-hundred point, and then we hit that, I think they call them some of the recession babies or that terminology, and so that group comes through there. If there weren't a way to more accurately predict kindergarten, that's the, that's kind of the million-dollar question, literally and figuratively. We, we work, you know, we work really hard to work with our local hospital and daycares and try to get kids in with preschool and screening, but that's probably, I would say of all of our heartburn, that's the grade level that is really, really hard to predict how many of those kindergarteners we're going to get. And even though kindergarten is less funding, it makes a substantial impact in our budget when we don't get the number of kindergarteners that we would expect, and then even on an ongoing, it compounds itself if they go through the middle level and high school, and we were counting on those students to, to help with fund balance. So, so this is a typical process for us to show you how we do on October one. Other questions or comments based on our enrollment?
Can I ask where the twenty-sixteen, twenty-seven, where the projected numbers came from? Did that come from Hazel several years ago, or was that a more recent?
No, Hazel's numbers kind of give us a facility total, what we think in the future kind of stuff, our, our projections are...
Internal?
What we think we're going to have in the season, how much we're going to get paid. That's kind of, we look at, you know, the last few years of migration, you know, from first to second.
But that's an internal projection.
Yes.
Internal projection. Mike's analysis is much, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, your analysis is much more finite, much more precise, but Hazel's demographic analysis was the four quadrants, high, high, low, 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 that sort of thing, which was directional, but I still believe, and don't quote me on this, I'd have to back and look, but this is consistent with the overall, if you recall, yeah, the trajectory is kind of flattening, we get the growth is going to slow down, so it is consistent with that. Being off by two students is pretty good, Mike. Any other comments? All right, thank you, Rod, appreciate that. We'll move on to item thirteen point one, which is the early release calendars, and Rod, I think you're going to handle this too.
Sure. Nancy would normally have been here, both Nancy and Dale, I guess, are both, both ill, so I'm going to substitute pinch-hit here. It is a second reading of sorts. We brought to the board the, with all of the changes, elementary, middle level, and high school, the need to capture what we thought would be a responsible number of early releases, which are a two-hour early release, and we went to the teachers' group and talked to them about would you want to, when would it work best, and it was a ninety percent plus request to do the early release, and so we did our homework there, we checked there, and the professional development will be primarily based on the small learning communities work we're doing, literacy work we're doing, and then some of the new coursework that's coming about, you know, many of you have kids on the, you know, in the school system, and it's, it's trying to find time vertically when they can meet with the Code Red class or a Project Lead the Way class, and so we talked about that at our learning session. And so for the two years, the settle, the settle endpoint was those four early releases, and they would be very specific, prescribed, and approved professional development, staff development activities that are going on, and then we would work with parents in the community for any of the opportunities that might be for, like a latchkey type of experience, if someone needed to make arrangements, we could work. Paraprofessionals, for example, when students aren't in class, paras aren't under contract, and so lots of the paras are interested in maintaining a regular weekly check, so having some time to perhaps be at Eagle Creek, I'll use for an example, to do some playground activities or gym activities or arts and crafts, we have that, we'll have that covered. I would assume it will be a for pay or a free and reduced lunch indicator if they run a free and reduced, but I would assume it would be most districts that do this around us, which is almost, I think, all of them now, it's about twenty dollars for the latchkey experience if they, if they choose to do that. And then maybe in summary, we met last time and we talked about the, the need to be able to get the information out there to our community and our parents, and so Dale put together, and we've checked it through, these are the four dedicated early outs that are on the seventeen eighteen calendar and then the eighteen nineteen calendar. And I would entertain any questions or comments in my head.
Just for the community's sake, what does early out actually mean? What, what time?
So it'd be approximately two hours early, and then we would adjust our busing to match that, and it's very similar to if we had a snow day that happened to be where we had to let kids out. We try to always feed the kids, so that's, that's important, because for some kids, that's their only, maybe miss a meal, so we try to get the feeding done. We sometimes arrange the lunch schedule too, to make sure everybody gets their meal, and then the buses are two hours earlier compared to what they normally are to keep that rotational schedule.
Other comments or questions?
I'll take one for Matt.
Move your mouth, Matt.
Based on what will be happening in the fall of eighteen with the opening of the academies and the small learning communities and the systemic shift in how we do things, I know that we as a board had talked about two versus four versus six versus eight of these early release days in order to give the teachers enough preparation and time to be sure that we're ready to open those doors in eighteen, and the teachers felt like this was what they needed.
Yeah, so Dale, Dale met with his executive group and bounced off all the ideas. This seemed to be the most reasonable and the one that would be supported for now, and I think the idea is if you can get two years of it, see how it goes, see how the community responds to it, and then in the future, if there would be the opportunity, because remember from eighteen through twenty-two, that's also our accreditation period, so a lot of things will be happening then. That would be another opportunity to monitor and adjust the activities and the professional development we're doing to see, are we on track, do we need more? And of course, it's a cheaper method, cheaper methodology for us, a better way, but from budget standpoint, to be able to get all of the vertical articulation groups in without having to pay them to double, it would be a double dip kind of a thing otherwise, yeah, so...
Other comments, questions? I have one, Rod. I'm asking this blindly, but I'm assuming that this was a topic of discussion. I almost feel like I'm channeling a former board member who I've heard ask this question. Sarah's going to know what I'm saying. I look at quarter two, and quarter two twice compared to the other quarters, now it's only a couple of days, you know what I'm thinking? I don't even know if we really have quarter classes anymore, but it's, it's four days shy at the most on the first year, and it's six on the day. I'm assuming you guys talked that through, and Dale and the teachers and the thing, so what's the, how would I respond to that, if somebody says, gosh, it's kind of a short quarter?
They were comfortable with that variance, or the delta was, there was enough comfort there that they, they were okay. A strong, strong majority of our classes, our semesters, so when we get our, like a check report card or a check snapshot in time, those come in, but clearly the structure on majority are through the other system.
So the professional, sorry, Sarah, the professional folks, you and the teachers, are comfortable that this is not only doable, but it's very acceptable?
Correct.
Okay, that's the comfort I was looking for, Sarah.
The biggest delta is in the eighteen nineteen school year, and that's front-filled, because that would be when the academies would open, the middle schools, and Pearson and such, so knowing that those first couple of days are adjustments and excitement and enthusiasm and celebration, they're, they're front-filled a little bit.
I trust the professionals, when they look at this, teachers knowing what the curriculum is and that they, they're not concerned that, gosh, I've now shorted ten percent of my days, and so I'm going to have a hard time, that's the confirmation of the point. Okay, so thank you. You're looking for formal action on this, Rod, and that is to approve the calendar as presented, then, Rod. That's correct.
I can make that motion.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Angela. Let me get it out. Any additional discussion on the two calendars, seventeen eighteen, the changes being the early release dates? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, motion passes, we have the calendar standing.
Thank you for that.
All right, let's move on to item thirteen point two. I think Scott and Mike are going to come down, these are all of our contracts, our agreements.
Correct. Our last, yeah, the last group of our agreements.
Give me applause.
Go ahead.
So I sent you the information, we'll do the clerical secretarial first, very moderate language changes on this contract. We did clean up a few things in terms of the banning and grading and where some of our clerical fall. I've been working on a long project with the district right now on not only banning and grading, but job descriptions for every employee across the district, it's been so much fun. You're supposed to laugh at that.
We ain't trying to laugh.
So there was a lot of banning and grading, which did cause a little shift movement. We added one level of vacation day to the, to one group of the clerical, cleaned up some deferred compensation as to when they would get their match, we now got that in all of our contracts to simplify that. We did do some major CEU work with our clerical, and I appreciate our clerical group working with us on that. That does help in terms of just when they can earn their CEUs and when they'll get paid for CEUs, which then gives them salary increases, so we did do some major work on that. And other than that, it was a three and three for six percent over two years with the clerical group, and we put five percent on their insurance, the district contribution for insurance that we have with our other groups. So that would be the package, but I'd be seeking approval. Do you want to do both at one time?
I don't see why we couldn't. Both were approved through the personnel committee.
First, yes, I worked with Matt, and the other two.
Shaw and Angela.
Shaw and Angela. I'm trying to remember who we, names are right here.
Scott, a couple of candidates. You want to ask one, or?
Yeah, that's fine.
And then related services, I, last time when I was up here, I believe it was on the paraprofessionals, I told you I had to do some work with our LPN group, our related services, it is a very competitive market out there. All school districts are really struggling to find nurses, and so we did, we did need to do some work on this one. Again, some minor language changes, but one of the things we ended up doing through our banning and grading and looking at the job responsibilities of our LPNs, we did move them over to levels, which did increase their wages, which was a nice little jump for them to be a lot more competitive. So in doing that, that was about a four and a half percent wage increase for our LPNs, and we threw two percent on the salary schedule. We took our cultural liaisons and moved them one grade over, their job responsibilities when doing comparable work and looking across what other districts do. A lot of districts use cultural liaisons different, we have our equity specialists, our EWE guys, and it kind of trying to match what they do with other districts can get a little confusing, did the best we could in terms of matching and comparing them to other districts. So overall for that, would have been six percent the first year and two percent the second year, but I do believe it does make us more comfortable in trying to getting and retaining nurses for our district. So I'd be looking for approval for both of those. I don't like that it was named.
Nope. I'll make a motion for both of those, to approve both of those.
It's our second. Any additional discussion? Anything I missed?
Just like to say thank you to Scott and Mike, this, great job on these two agreements and great job with the whole cycle, right in here, and now we get to start the cycle over again next spring. But it's good to get them all wrapped up in a timely fashion, and I'd like to thank our groups for, you know, as you relayed, the spirit of partnership that we've experienced with all of our, all of our groups, wanting what's best for our students and our community, so I greatly appreciate that.
Thank you. Any additional comments? I also want to say thank you to the personnel committee, because you guys do the young work, the blocking and factoring, but I appreciate what you guys do on the, we appreciate what you do on the personnel committee that kind of run interference, substitute for the board and provide us with recommendations, so thank you for that. All right, no additional questions, we will move jointly on the two different agreements that are in front of us. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes, is that the gentleman?
Yeah.
All right, we are, since we're at fifteen point one, I've lost my, I've lost my order of my agenda. Ah, there it is, there it is, great, we're done. Okay, let's just ask, do we have any committee reports? I will only say that I sent to you guys from AMSD, I don't, I don't know that you take any time to read these things, but whenever I get them, I'll always communicate with you. Association of Metropolitan School District, you know, I'm talking about, a lot of position papers, a lot of things relative to the upcoming legislative elections and what have you, so if you've got that information in case you have any thoughts or comments on that. Other committees, yes, show them.
The communications committee did meet, we had a, it was fantastic, we got the initial, not initial, it's the seventy-seventh version, but pretty close.
Close to being finished.
Of the branding guide and of the activities guide for our students and our families, and I think the branding guide, as far as I can tell, was nearly perfect, just a few small tweaks, and we've got a few, few things to add and change on the activities guide, but other than that, it looks really good too, so I think their, that committee and that department is doing great work.
Great. Anyone else? Other committee or outside? All right?
I'll say on the city's perspective.
Okay.
The Shakopee playground opened on Friday, and it's officially open running, so check it out, it's a great place to be, it was definitely community-built, so...
Actually, you made me think of one, I'll speak, maybe you guys want to chime in relative to BAC, we continue to be every two weeks, we've got a meeting coming up in a couple of days. As it relates to BAC, again, maybe you have something to say, Angela, but we know that the community center's coming along, the ICE, we've seen some pictures, our connection to that, and the teamwork is moving along, so we're all excited about the fact that our hockey team will be playing, hockey teams will be playing in a new home this fall, so we're all very pleased about that. And as far as an update on the project, I think in our next meeting, we probably have our next typical update that John would be bringing, but all things are moving ahead as planned. All right, let's do a quick around the horn panel. Anything else? Sarah? John, you're here, so I'll ask.
You know what, I was thinking, I'd just like to share, on this past Friday night, we had an opportunity to host a quarter final state, level two-A football playoff game at Mon Field. It was a two-A game between Maple River, which is down fifteen, twenty minutes south of Mankato, and Norwood Young America, two smaller schools, just fantastic experience, very good football game, got lots of positive compliments, and just people were wowed by the experience. Had a good staff on board and did a nice job, and it's just a lot of fun, so just a lot of positive compliments out there. Two very good football teams that battled earlier in the year, kind of a lopsided outcome, and this one was decided in the last three minutes of the game, so a lot of fun, but congratulations and thank you to all that you guys have done to make that facility and that project come to fruition, and we had, many of other people outside the community have the opportunity to enjoy it and experience it on Friday night, and it was, those were pretty, pretty fun. and experience it on Friday night, and it was, those were pretty, pretty fun experiences.
Leo Vaughn is a showcase now, and we're proud of it, and we'll be sharing with others too, since, thank you, John. Mike? Scott? Ashley? John? Those assistants who've been up there? Sean?
Oh, I'm biting my tongue, but I'll let Scott have it.
Matt? He deserved it.
I know, I know, I know.
I just wanted to recognize.
Sorry. No, you were better, Scott, no!
I'm not going to say that. Thank you. I just wanna tack onto what Angela said about the all-inclusive playground, but I specifically, I know it's community build, I know it was a group effort, I know that the Lions Club and the city and others did a great job, but I especially wanna recognize Angela for her spearheading, driving, fundraising, vision, and all of the efforts you put in above and beyond. And now we have a phenomenal asset for this community, and it's, I know it's a group, group effort, but you were the leader of that group for, at every turn, and I just wanted to say thank you for, for marketing.
I'd like to say that.
I'm gonna skip Scott. All right, Scott.
I appreciate the softball, or humor, Alan. So it is, I'm excited. I'll speak on behalf of Reg too, I don't, I probably should.
I was gonna say, go ahead.
So for those that don't know, our Shakopee Drama Club at the high school is currently in the middle of a production of The Sound of Music, of which I have two kids that are involved in, one's onstage, one's backstage. And equally as important as having incredibly talented athletes like we saw today, we have ridiculously talented artists in this district too. So if you have not gotten your ticket, I don't even know if you can get any anymore, quite frankly, because these are all sold out. But you want to find some, you wanna pay somebody, I know somebody that gets you a million. You want to go see this production.
Amazing.
To support not just the kids, but also to take a look at the accomplishments of the, the directors, the orchestra, the stage crew, you name it. Every element there really came together, and then it was a incredibly touching, beautiful production of a classic. All I can say is hats off to the Shakopee Drama Club.
All right, now I get to say one more thing.
Yes, now Sean, after we finish here. After Reggie gets.
Oh!
So I will echo what you said, I was there for opening night, and what I wanna say to the kids that are watching is that having had kids participate in drama all the years they were here, you always kind of, opening night jitters, you kind of never know what's gonna come out. It was a fantastic performance, and I know it's only gonna get better because they get more engaged, they get more comfortable with the audience, and it was fantastic opening night. So kudos to all the kids, whether they're on the stage, behind the stage, in the pit, back up in the, lighting and sound, I mean, it was a terrific performance. So, they really did a great job, and they do represent Shakopee very, very well. Sean?
Just a special congratulations to your children, because, how old is he? Six?
Seventh grade.
Seventh grade. He is, he's pretty special, and the future of our program is just as strong as what you saw today.
Rod?
We have been visiting some colleges and specialty colleges to, taking staff there to look at individual niches, such as, we went to Rasmussen and we met with one of the local detectives to talk about what if, what if in our Human Services Academy, we want our criminal justice men and women, young men and women, to get maybe a year under their belt before they leave Shakopee? What would that look like? And they're very, very excited to work with us, very much wanting to write a curriculum in a different way, super excited about that. Then we went downtown by First Avenue to a, a college setting for students that are wanting to get into production of music and, and video, and met with them about their facilities and would they help guide and lead us in some of our niche things, such as our broadcast studio, our recording studio and all that. Again, they were falling over themselves to partner with us and help, so we're, we're getting a second scoop of that. We're bringing WOLD and ICS along to actually look at the facilities, get the most bang for the buck out of the equipment and so forth. And then they too are interested, so if you're in the Arts and Communications Academy and you want to get some acting or, or some of the theater stuff for credit at a college level, they do that as well. In fact, the interesting piece, when we were there, they were, they had developed this beautiful documentary, and they talked about how each kid had to switch roles, do these different roles and so forth. It was just fabulous. And so, they loved our crew, our teachers, and Bob Cole were just, I think, in their glory, thinking about, does this really, is this gonna happen at Shakopee? And it's like, yeah, it is. So, we're, it's just a lot of really cool things happening behind the scenes, maybe not so much committee work, but real neat things happening on behalf of the kids in the district and our, our community. Tomorrow, we have a steering committee meeting tomorrow morning, and just excited to share with them all the, all the behind-the-scenes things that are starting to percolate now to the top. So, just good, good, exciting stuff happening.
That is exciting. All preparations, all built.
Yep.
All right, so with that, let me just cover, 'cause I wanna make sure the board's aware of a couple insertions to these meeting lists in case you didn't know about it. Our next, well, we have a personnel committee meeting on the 15th, so that's tomorrow. We have our next board learning session, the 28th. I believe we have now pulled 12 personnel committees, that's not gonna happen. December 12th is the next meeting we have. It's preceded by our truth and taxation, the annual meeting we have. January 9th will be the board reorg. January 16th, this is one of the three dates we inserted. We don't necessarily know precisely what the agenda's gonna be, these are placeholders, but with all the things we have going on, there was a desire to just put something on the calendar, kind of get it, so we're holding it, because there could be topics we just need to dive into deeper, not necessarily business meetings, but discussions, if you will. So, the 16th, actually, the 16th, sorry, that's the board retreat, the all-day one that we do every year. Learning session the 23rd, and then you have, which will be supplanted by additional typical board meetings, we have board retreats the 20th, 28th, and 17th respectively. Okay?
And why don't, why don't, why wouldn't the public see the regular board meetings on here at this time?
Because we will actually formally approve those in the new year, but it will follow, thank you for asking, it will follow the same pattern, basically two meetings a month until I think we get summer, and then I think we have a month or two where it's one meeting and then it jumps back to two. So it's gonna be, it'll follow the same pattern, second and fourth Mondays. Okay? Anything else? With that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, second.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You're adjourned.